I'd like to call the order the Dresden Select Board meeting for Tuesday, number twenty second. First item is gonna be the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and we are in public, which stands as one nation. In the midst of all with the living and just for our.
Thank you. Next, the proven signed amendments of previous meetings.
We did find one error. Already the gentleman that sent the letter about the Ballard Road and Jack Shaw and not Jack Smith.
That's on the October eleventh meeting. Last day.
Do you want me to reprint that page or I can?
No, no. And I don't see, I don't see anything else. Fine, I'm concerned anyway.
Etteron, October twenty fifth, minutes on agenda.
Second act. All in favor?
Aye.
Next is approved and signed by President Lawrence, the accounts payable warrant and the table warrant.
I think there's anything too unusual for the warrant, we paid all the election workers, so if you see a random name that you don't know, that's probably that is. Um, yeah. One thing else stands out.
Down here with the.
Steve's here. Steve is here.
Remember that.
Also on the warrants, we have a water warrant.
Go minutes. It's a neat night get on that. I don't know where I am.
Make a motion, approve the warrants.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye. I, I.
Bill's question on the water, whether we can get more detail breakdown on the invoices since there's everything from twenty bucks to seven fifty. Mostly our, it's mostly our weekly, our, our monthly bills for them. They're not very good at charging.
So. What do you mean by that? That they don't send out the red bill directly, didn't you do?
No, their bill to us.
Okay.
We pay them certainly a favor for us.
Right.
My point is, is there something discreet on these invoices that give us the large variation?
Yeah.
Yeah. To see it.
You check in. Us taking care of these.
I'm starting to, yeah, I think it's going to. Yeah. It's gonna take some effort on, so we'll, we'll have to hire somebody definitely to do it before, you know, give somebody more hours, but I think we could do it for a lot cheaper than.
Each hour is so much a month, right?
Seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Month, do the water, I mean, do the water bill.
To, to, to do the billing, to check the meters, to make sure that it's made, if anything goes wrong, they have to do extra work. We pay our cost.
Right, but when, if we take the whole thing over and that bell rings at nine.
Somebody has to answer the bell.
Right, so right now he has.
Right up here.
Let, let's don't put ourselves in a position that one of us have to answer that bell.
Right, which is why I said we hired somebody to do it.
Well, that's what I thought we hired him to do, that's why.
Where am I paying? We paid Trudy, we, we paid Trudy like fifteen thousand dollars a year, we're paying this firm like ten-ish, I don't, it's a little bit under or, or a little like, like over ten. It's seven hundred and fifty dollars per month, so.
Right, it's seventy five, nine thousand.
Yeah. On top of if anything goes wrong, then they pay more. Yes, so somebody will have to answer the name.
Not me.
Well, clearly, we would want to buy the related services, yes, what I mean, whether we in-source it or we outsource it, we need to understand what the job is. At the very least, we can take over the building part, that would be incredibly easy.
And he does charge, he does charge some of that, he's in the, that seven fifty includes billing.
He does, yeah.
So, and I can't remember, he did write out a quote on what it was per month of billing or per year, so we can break that down and take that off if we want to do it.
Daniel, what receipts did you get? For the water department? Not, not, it's. I think that we are about five hundred, we get twenty five hundred dollars. Per the year, so divide that by four or divide that by twelve, so like a hundred bucks and twenty bucks a month.
It sounds like a very good business to me.
There's not, not a good. So the water district was formed and then nobody wanted to run it or to get targeted, so, so the law said that it comes back onto the town.
That has been, my fourteen years I've been on here, we finally got to, but we'd rather actually get some answers now, but it, it never was. The town took it over through the state and everything, there's both there being, being committee, committee went to fund, so it falls back on the election if nobody does. It's nothing the selectmen wanted to do even way back then, John Autumn took it out. Then Trudy took it over, now this other company is six thousand dollars per year, we want, we're paying Trudy to do it.
Have we, have we investigated any way that we could get out of this?
We just.
We started.
We just got into it, we, we've only been in Billard for like a couple of years with this guy. So.
I mean, a whole. Whole water, we can't get out of it somehow?
No, this is the town address, it is the town address that we cannot get out of. The, the state gave us. Ooh, oohs of money to get it going and drill our wells and keep it going, that's, and they, they funded us, and I don't even know if we used all that money up yet, that they gave it to begin with.
The water department has, has had a lot of money.
Right, exactly.
So why don't we, why don't we audit the water department, find out what they have, their, their. But it, it does, it's a part of the town. But it's just a line item, right, the water department? Right, so that's one thing I talked about on the whole time I've been here, is I brought them, they were fully, they weren't really part of the town, they were, but they weren't, when I came, now the accounting is completely through the town. But you, you made a really good point, you said, if you'd like to take the billing in tax, well, they work for you, so, or for the town, so why can't we just follow up and say, hey, right now you're not gonna be billing anymore and we want to discuss with you reduction in your treatment. Because the water department has taken a side burner for anything else that I haven't been working on. Oh, so it's fine? Yes, okay.
But when that yearly contract is up, we did it, a yearly contract, when that contract is up for them, for that thirteen, four year, which, I don't know when the date is on it.
I didn't really, yeah, I'll find it.
But we can, we definitely can go over when you do it. We have. What's that?
Did the contract go up to RFP?
I, I have no idea, yeah, well. Really, I'm, I think he did, we had two or three different people bid out, we had the one in Richmond bid on it, we had Applebee, we had another one.
Will it go up to RFP again, will sports be like?
If we, if we want to put it out, we may not want to put it out.
Well, there's a contract with a fixed termination date, how can it be renewed without?
I, I don't know, I don't know if it's a fixed termination, maybe I bring you around and pick, pick, remember, yeah, let's, let's don't get off the right, wrong track.
My concern is, as I stated regarding the scope services or statement of work, it should be embedded in the contract and have performance criteria, and I haven't seen any, so. My question, my visit to the office tomorrow will be. But if they don't have it, doesn't, doesn't town attorney keep copies of all contracts he works on or looks at?
But our warrant department.
You're asking way too many questions. Want to dominate a court ordered or state ordered resolution to contamination.
It was, yes, it was.
So that's why it's non-negotiable at the moment, until we find an alternative that we can transfer some of the obligation or performance onto somebody else. So I think we need to do some research on this, I'm willing to. Interview you, et cetera, so we can figure out what are alternatives. Hey, I, I already went through the interview, you haven't, so sorry. I didn't, but. The selectmen did, yes. That was a good time to think we'll be back to the building. Excuse me? When will we hear back from you on the product of that? Well, I'm poking the bear on this one, so. You'll get an update next select board meeting from me.
Yeah, the thing too, when, when we went and we had Apple, we kicked it over, that was, Trudy had let us know what she'd been done, from getting done within just a matter of like a week.
Yeah.
So we had, we had no time to, to do a whole heck of a lot, other than to find someone, to jump in, to meet someone that gave the pumps, do the. The chemicals that they add, so there's a lot that we had to do, and they were available at that time to do that, that's what they do, they also do enrichment.
General announcements. The next regals meeting of the select board will be on Tuesday, December sixth at five P M. here at the hall. Town committee reports. Plenary board. School board.
Okay, so. First off, our next school board meeting is next Thursday at Halldale High School, six o'clock. There'll be a Zoom link for anybody that wants to see it online, if they can't make it, do the drive-in, but if you want to drive there, it'll be in the cafeteria. Uh, but I mean, I welcome anybody that's interested in what's going on in the school board, please attend, please do that, uh, we're getting into budget. We've just started, now, we are looking into. Uh, of course, the big hot ticket item is the fact that Richmond has got the votes to withdraw from the RSU. That will, um, that will make significant changes in our budget. Maybe not so much in our, in what our contribution is, but you know, how we go about doing shared items such as transportation. Uh, capital six plans, things like that, in, in that nature, and how that, how that's gonna look moving forward, and we start working on that now. Uh, the other thing we're still working on, we're getting ready to, uh, January is the target date for a full application search for a full-time. Uh, long-term superintendent that is in the works. Uh, let's see. Uh, I know they sent Superintendent Rick Morrow in central email requesting, you know, an opportunity to sit with the selectmen along with the school board and just kinda, you know, meet and greet more or less, uh, kind of go over what you guys, uh. Uh, you know, expectations, maybe not so much expectations, but just kind of more of a meet and greet, let you know what's going on, how we're moving forward in the superintendent search. You have an opportunity to just kind of cross the table, make that bridge, so that way you guys have a better idea of what, you know, our school board. Three, uh, you know, two-thirds of our city budget is contributing to, so. Um, and he'd like to, which I saw that you, your response, you're looking to set up dates, I know that. Uh, I'm pretty much available, I know Catherine has a, has a pretty busy schedule, she's, you know, uh, driving from Damm Scotta. To, uh, back and forth, and she, you know. Well, she does, but she didn't get out until long after your, until long after your meeting is over, so. Um, that's Catherine, that's circular.
Have you talked to, like, was he thinking add a meeting like this or like a special?
Well, that's the thing, it's a matter of, you know, come together, maybe throw a few dates on the table, see what works, works best for all of us, and then, you know, have a, have a meeting. Most likely, you know, it's where probably the town office, he's, he'll be, he would be going the travel this way, I mean, he was the only one outside of the area. Right. Be coming in, so I think the town office would be a great place if you, if you want to do that. So, uh, outside of that, I'm hoping that I see some people at our meetings.
Prior to scheduling that, I'd like to spend some time with you, so we get a dump of topics that we need to reinforce.
Okay.
Don't just assume that we're all gonna be versed in current concerns, if, you know, when you're counterpart.
Yeah.
You know, we can do a Zoom for thirty minutes to, to get up to date, speed on things that you're concerned about.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, and, and like I said, you know, we're, uh, any, outside, outside of the board, I have no authority. I've been reminded that, I, outside of the board, I have no authority, but I, like anybody else, I'd love to talk about the things that are currently going around the board, which is always public, and then, uh, you know, answer any questions, and even, even if you have questions now, I can answer that, that I have answers, or I have the capability of giving, so, and that is pretty much it.
This is the link.
Where's the link? Generally, I put it on the Dresden Facebook community page, but I know we have that sign. And I don't know if it's, if it has the capability of putting all of that link on there, it's not that long, but at least if it's on the sign, then maybe someone take the time to write it down.
Might be, might be more efficient, might be more efficient to say like, you know, go here for the link or something.
Yeah, I mean, I could do that, it's, I usually use a Dresden Facebook, maybe I should put it on there, and that's, you know, I'll usually put it out like a couple of days before, because if I put it out too soon, I found that it gets bought, that everything comes out on top, you know, like. Someone's greatest picture of the sun moving up there, moving back, which is a bad thing, but you know, uh, outside of that, I don't have the, I don't have a, a spot to put it. Outside of, you know, trying to do.
Well, soon we're gonna have a, a website refresh, and we would hope that it would be found.
Yeah.
In the associated tab or so, as well as in the town, anything that, that's part of it is also in the.
Absolutely, and I put it out there generally, uh, there's an agenda that is submitted to the community as a whole, but it usually goes to.
If.
Parents, you know, and other people that are involved in the schools, but that has no effect if you have no kids in the school, so. Uh, I think, unfortunately, I take my personal opinion is, if the entire community's paying for the school, the entire community should have some view on, on, on the agenda and options to make, so. Uh, one of the other things is, is that the school board is starting to initiate, and it looks like it's most likely gonna be, not a hundred percent sure, it's one of those voluntary, or. Well, and, you know, uh, that we'd be having a representative go around to all the selectman meetings and, you know, just kind of. Give, give an opportunity to answer questions, I think, yeah, since I'm the one that does it.
It's interesting, and I'll follow, I'll ask a question from my line, what is gonna do to us when Richmond folds out?
That's exactly what our budget negotiations, our, uh, meeting was last Thursday. We got a list of, we're putting together a list of all the shared items, like for instance, central office. That's a shared item that Richmond did help pay for, uh, one of the other things is, we have three buses that go to Dresden Elementary School. Uh, and, and of course, I, I, I do a lot of thinking for our school, because how is it, how is it gonna affect us? We have three bus routes in Dresden, but that third bus go, when they go to Dresden Elementary School and have, you know, all the elementary skid, skids, get off the bus. Go in the school, then you have two buses go to Halldale, and then one bus that goes to Richmond, bringing kids that were, you know, superintendent agreement. And when they leave, that bus leaves, because it was Richmond bus, but that doesn't take, now we gotta account for that third bus route. How is that gonna play suit with, if we only have two buses that are running in our area, how does that affect the times to pick up the kids? How does that affect time to pick, drop off the kids? What does that look like for high school students, the late bus?
Also.
All these things are, we're like.
Have some special, and, and Richmond comes and picked up in Dresden, so now.
Yeah.
All they'll have got in.
You're correct, these are, this is, our last meeting was generating with all the things that would affect us, then looking at it from the dollar perspective.
So, so our kids, they go to Richmond now, will they still have the option to go to Richmond and not?
No, they still have the option to go to Richmond, but the difference will be, there won't be a bus here tomorrow.
Okay.
Because the bus transportation was a shared item, and like any superintendent's agreement, if a child, if a parent decides they don't want their student or child to go to the, the selected pool. Well and good, you have a superintendent's agreement, but you're responsible.
That was one of the questions, will that child still be able to go in Richmond school?
They'll be able to. Yeah, they're gonna do their own transportation.
Thank you for that.
And, uh, you know.
I would anticipate that the school board would be preparing a presentation on this topic for each of the select boards, so that they're fully briefed.
Right, well, as we get closer to that final product, right now, to give you a briefing on just the list of the shared items without a solution, then it's kind of a waste of your time. And we, we wanna make sure we have the solution going forward, so that way when you ask the question, we, we, you know, like that, you answer that question, I, I had the answer.
Right.
But some of the ones like, what are we gonna, how are we gonna pick up the Richmond shared costs on central office?
But also, we're being, the whole community is paying Richmond's teachers and all that stuff, so all that, it, it won't come out of the purse now, right?
That won't, when, at the end of June budget, at the end of June budget, they're on their own.
Right.
They formulate their own budget.
That money that we don't have to give out, that.
Correct, correct.
Hopefully, we'll see what happens, what those.
You know, and, and again, our formula that's based off of what the town's allocation is based off in the state's E D U two seventy-five or two seventy-nine. That E D U two seventy-nine is a formula that the state creates that says, this is how much a child is required to cost for education. And then the state kicks in fifty-five percent, and then we're, we're allocated for our forty-five percent, and then that forty-five percent is broken up by, you know, how much is it costs for all students in that R S U. All right, I'll only drag you, maybe the answer?
How many, how many students do we have?
Seventy-eight?
Seventy-eight?
Yeah, in Dresden, in the Dresden Elementary School.
Yeah.
That's correct. We have on average, give or take, about ten student, ten students per class, so if you figure six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. That's another seventy students at the high school, but not every class has ten, some of them have twelve, some of them have nine, there's one class went four, they had seven, so, all that.
Whole, whole student?
Whole students at Halldale Middle School.
Whole students, all Dresden that go to Halldale?
All, all students that go to Halldale, Halldale Middle School and High School, so average of ten students per class, right?
So you can add another seventy on to that.
So yeah, another seventy, so a hundred and forty-eight.
Right. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
You are most welcome.
Broadband committee.
Um, well, we've been working really hard for quite a while to get a lot of information, and it's like some lights came on for us in this past week, so I'm, I'm here to sort of make a formal report. Um, the back to broadband has seemed confusing, complicated and slow, it often seemed that we had more questions than answers, and the goal was kept moving. Working with the group that included Dresden West Cassette and Woolwich was helpful because you check this asking budget. Our goal was, is to offer fast, efficient internet to all the residents of our towns. We want this service to be cost-effective for all and not raise taxes in our towns. Federal money to the states that would, would issue grants, um, to develop the system is the magic if, if this happened. The Dresden West Cassette Woolwich group invested our funds to find out what it would cost in the group and as individual towns to contract and develop the only model that we knew about. A public-private partnership. The day before we got the report from Accio about the public-private partnership. Um, we had the opportunity to learn about another very different model, a regional system that's offered by, um, Fiddy and Fiber. Which is part of consolidating. The two systems would both offer fiber optic systems that can be built in all three of the towns. The residents and businesses in the town would be able to choose with the new system or to stay with the internet service they currently have. There would be three cost options of service, and all of the systems would be less expensive than what most of us are currently paying, and the service would be radically better. The public-private option would make each town own the system um or multiple town broadband utility district. That would include all three towns as the internet service provider. This model would involve a big financial commitment from each town with the expectation being that ninety percent of the cost for building a system would be picked up um as a grant by the main connectivity authority. For this investment, we would be partnered in owning the system. That ownership would include management, maintenance, insurance and billing. Um, there is a possibility that some income would be derived from this investment. The regional model will involve turning our responsibility for the system over to Fidion Fiber. We, as a town, would need to make a much smaller financial commitment upfront. We would not be the ones responsible for applying for the grants, we would not need to oversee or maintain the system. We would not be responsible for selling subscriptions or collecting monthly payments from customers along with the risk any profits would go to Fidion. Um, so currently, we have figured on what the pub- the public private system would cost and what the potential income from this system might be. Um, and what I'm asking for today um is a letter of support to Fidion Fiber, so they can put together a feasibility system. So we have some idea of what what that system is gonna be costing us. The study will give us some hard figures to compare with what we have received from Axiom. Um, the next, the the next MCA grant cycle is gonna be in like February or March. Um, and we really want to um make sure that we know which model and and chosen the service provider um for that that meeting. Um, because, you know, as the money and the grants are given, the the money will start to dwindle and we've got a better chance of getting more money we're able to get in this next system. There's an awful lot more that that we're going to explore, we're not just looking at those two companies. We're we're gonna be looking at at other, speaking to other companies as well. Um, but at least if we can get the letter um to find out what Fidion Fiber has got to to offer us, that that will give us, you know, sort of a picture of what the apples and the oranges one way. Um, and we've got, we've got some uh people here that have been some probably better answers than I've got. Um, Evan, Evan came um to this meeting. Um, so, uh, yeah, any other, are there any questions?
I have a question. Can we get uh Fidion to come and make a presentation as to what they're going to provide us with? Give us a roadmap of what we're going to be getting, what would be our demonstration?
Okay, um, but yeah. But I'm hoping that that we can, we can get the letter of support so that they start putting together what what we need to know um before they come to the meeting. But yes, we will get them.
Since Axiom, Axiom's report is non-protected. Doesn't contain any trade secrets or specifics other than approximation, number of polls and all that stuff. It appears that we're having, can have bells and suspenders here, but it's a redundant study. But knowing that Fidion is gonna do it anyway, um, this is a no cost either to us. Um, it just would affect the schedule, which has been up in the air anyway. Um, but what are your thoughts with sharing Axiom's report with Fidion? And Certex and Spectrum and any other potential vendors?
Oh, it will be a public document, so there's no sense in that, um. When it comes to Spectrum, I wouldn't give them, I wouldn't uh put them out if they were on fire, so there's that in. Those type of comments always do well with the crowd. Um, what was your, what was your next question? Um, in terms of, everybody's gonna wanna do their own analysis of what Judy's describing, looking for a letter of support for Fidion. Um, that's the best, most exciting part of that is that part is great. Writing this letter of support, other than the ten cents that it will cost Daniel to draft a, draft a letter. Um, they'll do their own engineering and then it will probably be a bit different than here, here or there, depending on what they use for contingencies, if they go five percent here, ten percent there on different cost of materials, all of that, so. For the most part, you'll hear, you can, when it comes to the document, you can share it the way you see fit.
A meeting with certain vendors, basically what we're, we're hinting at is we get locked into a single provider. Or that from a town system. Um, the people will still have the option to continue with the current service provider. But the contract with the town would lock us into a sole ISP. That has to be weighed, and this is all preliminary.
Well, if you're doing a, if you're working with Fidion, it's not to say that you're bound to them and Spectrum forever. You just would have that.
It's, it's just like Westport Island with Spectrum.
Right, they gave, they gave, they gave back, but.
So the whole islands, right, they get contracted.
Fidion could come in and do that too.
Could do the same thing here with Fidion.
Um, or. Although I'm saying without the dent, they wouldn't need to discuss anything with the dent, they could also at some point.
Well, right.
Right.
The nature of, there's no, Fidion is really consolidated.
Right. Consolidated.
Right, so every hardware phone that you copper, pair that you have in your house and in everybody's house, they can upgrade to fiber on their own nickel at any time. Good thing is they use national rate structure and not a regional one or a state one, or so it's claimed. Um, we haven't tested that yet, but um, it's just, we're gonna look at all the different alternatives. Appreciate Judy standing up and and doing that, because there are a number that we need to look at um to come up with a recommendation to the town on what we think the best would be. We are going to be using Bridge Academy or an information polling board um as well as leveraging the new website and Facebook group as well. So we're on the cusp, they ask, uh, which, uh, we have a draft, um, I think is a good idea. To get Fidion to get started doing the study, so we don't fall further behind. Funding is twice a year cycle, April and actually everything is up in the air.
The market changes with whatever.
Right, the wind blows and all of a sudden it slips a month or days a week or quarters a week, but um, the next funding cycle is in the spring, one after that will be in the fall and so on and so forth until all funds are depleted. The rules keep changing as the pot gets smaller. Um, main connectivity authority is the one that is controlling the purse at the moment, but they're not the only source of funds, so we're pursuing other things as well, but um, it's a real rat's nest when you look at it from the outside. But, um, well, I guess, can I make a motion that we approve drafting the and sending the letter to consolidated slash Fidion?
I'll second that one too.
It's non-binding, it's.
Have you seen this, what?
I haven't seen it, but I mean, one similar kind of was bad and it looks about similar.
Yeah, that's the model we use.
Yeah.
And could you, I don't know if everybody knows.
So I'm having a cow scan from West Castle, I hope you don't hold that against me. And I've been working for Lincoln County now, uh, trying to get everybody's broadband plan together and have everybody at least have two choices. A lot of people have a cable and we're trying to get everybody to have a fiber option by the end of this thing, so it's a magical service that never slows down. That's the goal, whether it's a private or if it's a union, whatever works for each town and try and get there, because there's right now about seventy million from the state that Dresden and other towns would be eligible for and it's of everybody's interest to get that money out the door, so people can have service, because I like to say it's better to truck in water than to try and find some new avenue broadband company that you don't have, you don't have services in there, so.
And we, and we have gotten this far, our three towns, with the the guidance and the leadership of of Evan.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Evan. Okay, so, yeah, so that that letter's gonna get signed and it's gonna get sent out?
So I'll, I'll second that one.
Call in favor.
I.
So yeah. There's another part to this.
Yes.
Right.
Right, and then the other, the other thing that the communication and technology committee has been working on.
One thing for us. So next, not next to you, wait, yes, yeah, the hallway is like. Um, so next Thursday, the first, um, the three towns, and we are hoping that the three select boards as well will meet with at 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 the company that did the survey or the 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 company that did the study for us Axiom to review it and to go over, you know, what their findings are, are.
We're gonna have it at the Lincoln County Planning Commission Office next to Sea Basket.
Yeah.
On Route One.
What time?
Five thirty P M.
Next Thursday.
Thursday, the first of December. Mark will join us at about six, they go over the feasibility study that the town's paid for and five thirty. I'll pick up and uh pretty much do a quick workshop with everybody, kind of get people up to speed, just what the technology is out there. Um, basically the quick three years of brand history in the state, what the state's actually been doing last three years and then what every town in all areas doing it from every direction, because pretty much everybody's doing something. Just to give everybody a quick update.
And we have to start about here, because if all three of you or two of you are going, it's a meeting, so we have to advertise that the three of you will.
That's the other thing.
I was advertising now, but I definitely don't.
We have to have, we have a weeks notice, so as long as we're close to five things here. Uh, which I'm not working on it, so I'll do it, so.
Which was definitely was tomorrow.
Yeah.
Can the report be released publicly so that people who want to attend the meeting can form in advance?
Yes, yep, so each town, each town paid for it, it's each town's property and obviously that will be public, so.
For how was.
Timing, timing, when is that report available?
Good question, so I don't know if we're getting the completely finished product on December the first, but it should be pretty darn close, so. By the end of December, it will definitely be out there and we'll have this meeting recorded on Zoom.
So, yes, you'll get it, but not before that meeting, right or right?
There is, and it was a draft, so.
That's in the indication though.
Let me get that graph before the meeting, those of us who would like to see that public document in advance of watching it.
Good question. We should have a copy of it, because, yeah, I'll have a copy of it, so.
Okay, this is the public records request, I can stop it tomorrow.
Sure, thanks.
All right, I don't find that in forty-five days and we'll get the regular one to you in the re- in the real time.
Um, all right, and and the other, the other side of what the the communications and technology committee has been working on is I'm gonna pass this over to Lauren, because she's worked really hard to get get the format for our new website.
Everybody, we're even, Jacob's put up the first draft of our rebuilt website with some input from all kinds of people. He's gonna just kind of walk us around. Um, the website is gonna have lots of uh of area for opportunity to add new things, improve. Um, you can see here, we've got a a widget that has the Facebook page that's live, so anytime they make changes to the Facebook page, it automatically shows up on the website. There's also a link right under there to the Facebook group that you can go join that group. Um, also, Daniel, if you could click on this little widget, that's our new handicap accessibility widget. And users can make a lot of choices on what will help them use the website to the fullest extent and its ability and um.
This will put our website into eighty-eight compliance, margins of disability that compliance, uh, which we currently do not have.
Right, lots of people don't have, and so we have everything pretty much that the old website had and we are trying to add some new things. Um, some suggestions have been to have a list of town businesses. So we're considering that might take some work to get that list together. Um, we're gonna have something for the broadband, each, maybe a speed um test that you can do online if you want to. Go ahead, Doug.
Well, I was just, I'm a header guy, so all the ones across the top where, as I mentioned before about um government being boards and committees as well as ordinance information, town services, et cetera, um, those are, click on those and it takes you to those pages.
Yeah.
So I'll listen on there now.
Yep, it's all on there now, we uh got a new domain, DresdenME dot O R G, work. And we still have that town of Dresden dot com domain, which we can re-point when we're ready. We're also talking about new email addresses and having more space for email or um, yeah, more things that we can do with that, so.
Yeah, right now, a lot of our emails get bounced because it's townofdresden dot com. So I think a lot of spam filters are picking that up as spam, townofdresden dot com, you know, that's like a generic thing that they can make it up. The dot org is a lot more protected.
Are we gonna change that email still?
Yeah, that's, that's a process, that will, that will just happen, we can all. Lauren and I will, will, we'll work on that.
And we can do the same thing to import emails from the old address to the new one, so that you don't miss any.
So they asked a question about this, because I'm I'm on the website on my phone, but I don't have, that's what I have.
So it's DresdenME dot org.
So we need to put that out there.
The old, this is the old address, but this is what I get if I log on to that, so.
So the old address, you still get the old website.
That is the old website.
This, this is why, this is not even, there's nothing here.
No, the Dresden dot.
I mean, it's, it's, I mean, you're welcome to give it a try.
What did you type?
Town of Dresden dot com.
That was supposed to be. I used it.
Right. Now you see why we need to change it.
If I type in DresdenME dot org, I come up with it, okay.
Is this live now?
This is live now, it just, nobody knows about it, there's no reason to hide it, because nobody knows about it yet. So, um, we're gonna get approval to make the move over to the new website soon as as the select board thinks that it's finished enough and will continue to make improvements as we go.
I have a question, Lauren, so when you have the different committees or, you know, the fire department, will they be able to put anything in there as information?
So if it's a link to, let's say we put a link to the fire department, they have their own website. So when they, it will be a link to their website and whenever they change things, we'll be able to see it.
Okay, but as far as the committees go, they don't add their own website?
No, the committee, so we'll make updates whenever it's necessary.
Okay, so you're making what?
So if we have, let's say, the planning board wants to have their link on there, we'll probably send them to Daniel. Uh, we're working out a system to make it easy for everybody. We're talking about using the Google Drive to be able to share information and then we'll post it to the website. So different committees have information, they can email it to through the website or to Daniel and we can all share it.
Yes, in the long term, we do the answer.
Yeah.
This is just a baby, this is the first step.
Right, if if you're saying that you want somebody, a committee to have their own.
Also, they have information like the Broadway, that's right, okay. You go to the front page, you click on broadband, you just broadband.
You go to the front page, you click on broadband, you just broadband, A, she bought, which you have already.
I think she only.
She submits it.
Yeah.
To Daniel.
Yes.
Yeah, that's, that's a good question.
Saying that each committee should have that ad and right to submit their own information about their committee.
Well, um, the.
I don't know, I think you get too many fingers in the pot. Don't like that at all, I I touch it. I think you're gonna have Lauren or Daniel off, because I think it needs to go through somebody instead of.
I'm not saying it shouldn't, but I'm just thinking, if he's tied up, then he's gonna go out for three days.
Well, first off, it shouldn't be him. Right, it should be somebody else, we need to figure out.
Okay.
Who that is.
You are.
Right, because we're already talking about him being underwater on other topics, this would just make it worse, right? So.
Yeah, Daniel doesn't have to take all the updates, but we're talking about being able to utilize the Google Drive, because then committees could. Upload to the Google Drive, and then. Uh, a number of us to be discussed could post.
Right.
Because you want to put a quality element in there and have no. Or anything.
Or get have, you could have things deleted.
Yep.
Uh, as everybody.
Call you off, I mean, that could be just. Salute him.
So, just a little bit of control, it's not that, that will turn.
I think it's good, but it just, you know, it's. Quickness, we've seen how long it takes things to, to go through three different.
All of them.
So now that we've opened the can of worms, how would you like to harvest additional comments?
So, I mean, they can go through the contact. Page of the new website, people have suggestions of features and elements that they would like to see. And then that can go to the committee to discuss. Whether that's viable and whether. It would be good for the group as a whole.
Do, do we have a document that outlines what it is we want on this website?
A document, um, not really, um.
Well, how, how do you build a website without it, I mean, I don't understand, I'm, I'm. I've been asking this question, and I was told we had a scope of work, or someone was working on a scope of work. So it's hard for you, if you're not a mind reader, right? And and you're mine, I'm just, it's just a simple business practice that you, when you start a project like this, you have a scope of work.
Sure, we knew what basic elements we needed, as far as the calendar, a place for committees. Um, you know, contact information, tax information, links to other groups. Uh, there's pretty standard. Things that go on any town website. And then if we want to add other things, because we want to be creative or be closer, we can, we can do that as well. If you poke around and you see something that, you know, or you notice something is absent that you would like to have on there. You know, feel free to.
Well, I I remember an earlier meeting, uh, one of the gentlemen, I forget who, suggested that we should have larger type, because a lot of. The residents are elderly, so is there an option for them to click to enlarge the type?
Yes, in that accessibility widget.
You can.
There is something to enlarge the type, it will also, if you. Click on text to speech, you can highlight a whole section, it will read it to you.
Do we, do we have a like pop-up that would come up to, as people are using, say, try this or try that?
They try this, but, um, people are coming to recognize that widget. Um, and if they click on it, just see what options they.
And on that widget, it says, episode epilepsy save mode. Uh, visually impaired mode, cognitive disability, A D H D friendly. I always click on that to begin with. Scare me away. Not very user friendly, anyway.
It's not user friendly?
No, no, I mean, just it it describes all these conditions.
Well, because it does say text to speech, or it does say, um, some other.
It's like, I don't, I don't need these elements, I'm like, I'm gonna look together, let's figure out how to, for instance, make the type there. Right, I mean, I was, but anyway, that's.
It does say.
I don't wanna take up your time.
Um, but I could put somewhere on the page, I could put a, um. A tutorial. Uh, about how to use an accessibility widget, if that's.
I think that's, that's a good idea, because I wouldn't know what that, that little thing represents, so just, just a, just a, a real small, you know. That this is for for with disabilities.
I would, I would suggest to Gary and anybody else here. Go onto the website, try the features, then you'll have some suggestions, right? Don't look at the screen up here and say, oh, I got many ideas, go there, hit that little icon, see what comes up, then if you don't like it, come back to the committee with.
I'd be, I'd be happy to do that.
Yeah.
Um, well, my, my points are, has nothing to do with my experience, it has to do with the process in which we entered into developing this website.
I thought you'd be so happy.
I am, I am.
It will be, it will be a vast improvement.
Lauren, Lauren did a phenomenal job in that we took things of the website, we looked at other town and city websites. Um, I was pretty emphatic about getting to ADA compliance, which I only gave you the first five things. Goes on, muting sounds, hiding images, uh, have a virtual keyboard, have a reading guide, do stop animations, create animated. Reading, a reading mask, um, highlight hover, highlight focus. Um, big black cursor, a big white cursor. Navigation keys, text and speech, as Lauren mentioned, content scaling, so it can be. Enhanced or shrunk, font sizing goes up in five percent increments, line height, I mean, it just goes on and on with the options, and. It is, it is one of the best widgets in the market.
Great.
And it's something that puts us in compliance, and that's why I think Lauren did a great job of finding what would be non-intrusive. For instance, if, if she said it, that, well, everybody wants a ten percent higher, and everybody has to have a ten percent higher. And it, it becomes worthless trying to finish your phone.
Right.
When the scale was too big, so, um, we, we like to have people go out to Dresden M E dot org. Take a look at it, see what's missing. Features you'd like to add, um, we'll get, you know, an estimate on what it's gonna pay to make any changes. But hopeful that by the change of the year, that we could have this become our official site.
Great. So, if I may, we need to put on our board in board, try our new website, Dresden M E. In the dark. No, no, so we, we need to do that, because otherwise that, I wouldn't know that tonight, I wouldn't have gone on that.
No, but what I'm gonna do this, when we're ready, when you guys have decided that this is officially the new website, we will just re-point the old domain, so that it automatically goes to the new one.
I know, it should be advertised, and we'll check it out.
Well.
There.
Okay, but when, when would we like to do that, what, what is, what is the committee got left? To, to make this happen, or can we do this now?
It's up to you. Yep.
Is there enough on there now that people would find?
Everything that the old website had. I moved everything on it.
Well, I, I went promotion that we, we, we do it. And it's on tonight, and, and that way when the people thought. Oh, call it, if that's what, is that what you're up to, I mean, is that what we need to do?
Well, I threw out. A common period, if you will, so that we can deal with at the first of the year, but we can do it so.
Oh, well, it.
I mean, in reality, it's already there, right?
Right.
So, but we're looking at the feedback before we. Start moving all pointers to Dresden M E dot org. Because right now, people are, people that use it go to Dresden dot com.
And, and just like Gary did tonight, he was just saying the same thing, that's what I do, I never would have come up unless it automatically threw me over to it.
It would automatically throw you.
If I do it tonight, that will automatically throw me over to it?
Yeah.
Oh.
So is he giving you the go ahead?
No, no, it's not, yeah.
No, she.
She needs to go.
You want, not the official statement. Is it better, I mean, like, the beta of itself better, or is it a lot? They see, so a lot, we're here, we're all learning about it, it's being broadcast. Right, people are starting to look at that as well, is, is that just up there, you know, static and there?
It is, it's changing and evolving as, as we need it to, we're gonna continue to improve upon it.
I meant the calendar stuff and the reports and things like that. It's not a new calendar. Calendar is pulled right off of the towns.
Yeah, I think that that's the most specific thing that, that we need to have in place before, before we, we open it up and say, here it is. Is we need to have the calendar be absolutely accurate and able to be changed.
That's not something I can do.
Right.
It should be, I were talking to Catherine, the clerk, uh, and I think Anne Heather and Minnie too, it should be as updated as we, as we know.
And as soon as they update the calendar, it automatically updates it.
So this is the Google calendar, is that?
Yes.
So who keeps?
The time on, yeah.
Up taking that name?
I can do it, the clerk can do it, Anne has access, whoever works.
So what's the point in not, it gets to be advertised on that nice town sign that we have? That's telling us the time and date.
Basically, we should.
When, we can't give you feedback of a town if we don't know it exists, and I wouldn't know this existed if I didn't come here tonight. So I have to agree, and I apologize, but I believe his name is Alan, with, let's give it to the people, because that's how you're gonna get your feedback. It's already there, it's already accessible, Gary just got it on his phone, another gentleman got it on his phone. You're not gonna know if it's gonna break if you don't give access, I say, I agree with Alan, it needs to go on our sign, why did we pay for that sign if we're not gonna use it?
That, that ain't what that was meant to be, I was gonna say. It's gonna go on, and I'm just making, it may not, it just may not be, I would avoid it, so. So I don't. I don't think so, I agree with your vote, so, but if, if, if it isn't done, I don't wanna make a vote to put it on tonight, you know, if they've already got it set up for the first year. Then I, this is the first I've heard of it, and I, now, and being a.
Everything that's, that was on the whole website is on the new website, so.
Yeah, but so, so the site that is, is in, working progress, I understand, is live for anyone to go live on it. So why wouldn't we put it on the side and say, under construction, our new website, please provide any comments that you might have? We, we could, you could put that right on the opening page, when you could say, under construction, that's what we should do, that's, that's what, when you test a website, you do, you don't put it out in domain, you put it on the server. And you test it internally, and you have it on a closed network, so no one else can see it. But in this case, it's out in the public, that's great, so why don't we take advantage of it, I think it's, you know, for whatever reason, it's turned out because you're a good.
I think we need more comments.
We just got the comments, I, I want to hear a suggestion about having, having, you know, the, we, we're, we're asking for comments on our website. But let people know that they can use the new website tonight, I mean, or tomorrow, I mean.
You can use the right one, you can use the right now. Anybody in this room can log on to the site.
And we need to let, let people know that, that it's, that it's there, and it's there under construction, or if they're open for comments.
We should also. I think we should, I think we should probably do, uh, like Dawn said, I mean, it had it set up at the beginning of the year, let's take some time to look at it. I pull a trigger tonight, let's.
Well, the chairman's been hold.
It's out in the public. You don't think that at the end of this meeting, the town will know that we have a new website?
You just hope that, right, what are you so afraid of? Because that's what I'm feeling.
Town's official website, town of Dresden dot com. We have not announced that it is officially Dresden M E dot org.
Okay, so what do you have?
I was a pretty.
The readings on this.
The question sounds like, what are you guys just gonna announce it officially tonight or not? Yep, that's all. It started in a town.
We're gonna hold it, we're gonna do, that's all. I think Dawn said, we're originally looking at the beginning of the year.
Yeah.
Let's take it, let's take a little bit of time, so get some feedback, go look at, go look at it, I mean, you can look at it all you want, do what, do what you want, but we're not gonna mandate it, so.
You guys aren't bad, yeah, that's all.
That's right.
That's it. But it's there.
It's there.
Right.
Now, just thank you, Lauren.
Thank you, Lauren. Does that mean that during the interim period, the town has to maintain two websites, is this?
Yeah.
So I see my word, isn't it?
It's automatic.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
No, I'm serious, except the pointers, the links are already there.
Yeah.
Her, what she has to do.
So she doesn't have to.
She's gonna find, doing a couple of things, for instance, when I call it up on my phone. And I look at it, and there's a line that's blocked by something else, she's gonna straighten that out, and. It's gonna look better going forward, so by the time we officially change everything. To, from town of Dresden dot com, we will be, there's enough time to put it on Facebook and everything that it's going to be Dresden M E dot org. And Lauren, I think you did a phenomenal job.
Good job.
Very nice.
Thank you. It looks pretty good, I think. It's a pretty sight.
So you're.
Right.
What's your ask?
So we don't, there's nothing to report. But we do have an open seat on it, and. Even Hewitt, who's here, has applied for the, um. The open spot, and he did fill out. The, um, the form that Catherine had for you. And, because we talked about that, that we need to have a little bit more information about people that, you know, that are gonna be putting on to the committee rather than just.
So, with, we had an open discussion on the budget review committee.
Yes.
A few weeks I went in and I asked about this, and somebody said, the whole office said no, and nobody.
There was some research done, and I guess there wasn't.
Okay. But I found it out tonight.
You definitely have your position.
Some of the habits are like it had more. I'm, I'm all like. I don't.
Thank you, Cloud and Robins up there.
Steve just showed up at the office and somebody. Questioned. I, it didn't look digging.
And now you're trying to get answers. So. I'm glad it's great, Dawn.
So we need a resume, does it need to make a speech, or?
They, they, they're meaning right on.
All we did was just set up a little profile, right, that person fills out. Why they're interested, what they're, in this case, put in, and them and credentials, I think. So given this, and the completion of this, if it's on the table that we approve the appointment, I make a motion to be approved.
Okay, now. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Beck, but I got the quarterlies at my office, if you wanna review them.
E X, slot board reports, transfer station.
I think we actually have a new website that we're gonna talk about for the transfer station. Okay, um.
So. You would long be aware, because I already know what I'm gonna say.
Um. Early reports, you know, not an awful lot, except that they are still, well, like, fairly busy, they completely run out of space now for any, any return vote, so we have to clear up that. They completely run out of space now for any, any return boat, so we have to clear up that. Um, I had worked out a deal with. With somebody that they were going to trans, that they, 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 they were gonna use their vehicle to transport a lot of bags to the place and get, in, um. In Redoff, but that truck is not legal, so we're not gonna use that truck anymore. So, um, and then Dawn had.
So we have, so we opened a Quink account, right? Um, and we'll make labels available if anybody wants to donate to President Rec. Um, or whatever we end up calling it, but we need to control it, as in. It needs to be earmarked for a purpose, or to a fund, that kind of thing. Um, but Quink is set up, it's, uh, they currently have fifty bags. I told them to load the bags going forward. Um, my car liter, is literally filled with bottles as we speak. Cuz I'm transferring. Transferring from boxes to bags to take up to Hannaford. But there are rafts, literally rafts of bags, like five-foot bags that are. Three feet diameter, that need to be hauled on, um.
Are they where the volume? Hannaford? That's gonna be coming.
Quink, running some bag.
I mean, you're just supposed to bring a bag or three at a time.
Correct.
Yeah.
If we, based on the Thursday, Saturday, Sunday. We're anticipating that we will have a compliance flow.
Okay.
Um.
What you get caught up.
If we get it correct. The problem right now is that shit outside is, is reporters cold. With, uh, and that's why Ernie is coming back on taking.
Do, do we have to buy these bags from Quink?
Unfortunately, yes.
Why, what is that cost?
It's two fifty a box. For ten.
Ten bags.
Oh, for ten bags, right, that's not so bad.
No, but the smaller bags, what I've suggested to Ernie is, let's pre-label the bags, so if anybody wants to. Take it home, fill the bag, bring it back, that kind of thing, we can do that, um, but the Quink account is set up. It is an alternative until we find somebody that can take the volume.
Do, do they pick it up for you?
We have to bring it. Right now.
We have to bring it.
Right, I know a couple of people that work us that way, so.
Where are they?
It, it's any Hannaford.
I have any Hannaford.
Right, so all you do is you scan the label. And it goes in the account, you drop, slide it in, drop it in, slide it in, and, uh, that's it. Outta your hand.
So you have to take them on the bag and put them through a thing, or just leave them? I guess I don't know what you're talking.
It's a green bag, it's labeled with one of these.
And it tells you how many's in it?
And I scan it, no, no. They, they, they're gonna take care of it, once it's in the light state, they take care of it, and it automatically goes to the account.
Who's gonna be doing the money picking up? Cuz you can't get a check. You have to go to the. He asked me.
Well, we'll let it accumulate before we start chasing it. I'll work it out with the town administrator. On how that would be done.
So do you need people with pickup trucks to take bags over?
Not for them.
Not for them.
Quink is not the worry at the moment, it's the backlog. And. I don't know, since we don't have a truck, it sounds like Paul's truck might be available.
I shall have.
I talked to nobody in Lipsfield to have that guy do some more, but he just, he just can't, he can't, and he didn't.
I actually spoke to the, the, the demons in Watergate. Which I know is a little of a hall, I drive everywhere, so. I think we're gonna work out something where we give a drop off of our backhoe, and they will take care of it, but they, they don't ever want to do it again.
Well, that's, and after thing, the, the problem with those standards is you have to wait, right? Most of them, they'll do it and do it in our system, but most of them prefer you wait and get paid, right? We, when you drop it off, it's the account.
We, we pay Richmond some key to use their facility, right? Does that anything drop the little bottles there?
No.
No, they don't have.
There's nothing to recycle bottles, but, but money-wise, recycleable bottles, that has to go to Bobcat Redemption, and, and.
Okay. So they get bottles there, they have the same problem.
Right.
So I came up with a little interim approach till we figure out what we're gonna do.
Yes, Dave.
I just wanted to make a, a comment on how nice the recycling center looks. It's never looked that cool, let's put it, go without this, it looked this good. So I, I kudos to Ernie and, and Billy, taking care of that, they're right on the spot when you go, when you pull in, they come right out. Um, I, I really, really appreciate that.
Make sure it's better stuff.
Right.
Speaking of recycled center, we may need a new door before too long, there's gonna be a rock hole, it's gonna go all the way through.
Just wanna say, I put my hand on it, it went in.
Oh, it did?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Not, I just like put it on, and it went, and there, there was give to it.
Yeah.
Not that I put a hole in it.
It's, it's held up good, nineteen eighty-four. In four eighty-two. Oh, wait a minute, don't stop. Maybe you'll never want.
The other, the other thing for the transportation is that we're having a little bit of an issue with, with the back sizes, so. Um, right now, people pay two dollars and they can bring whatever size of bag they want. Yeah. What we're finding is that they're not sticking to that, you know, there are many days where. Uh, Dustin can't even, like, the, the bag are so big that you can't even get them over the rail without, like, two people doing it. So. One thing that Ernie and I ha, 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 have I talked about, and I think this would be the way to go, we could put a stopgap on the problem. Uh, because, um, by, by putting, by, by putting a limit on, on the backside, so we can say that no bigger than. A, like, thirty-gallon bag can be, you know, could be good, because. You know, to look at it from the point of view, we're getting less for our, our money, because we're taking in more trash, but people are paying with a single amount.
Right.
And also, you know, the, the HR part of my brain works, we're asking, well, well, like Dustin, who, 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 who is the young guy, to do a lot of extra work? Where, what if he drops one, what if, you know, what if he hurts his back, what if, so I think that's a problem too. So, one thing, so like I said, we could put. A limit on the size of the bag, up to, up to the, 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 the thirty gallons, but you can still put a lot of trash in thirty gallons.
I think we ought to go back to, I knew once who went to thirty pounds, cuz we went. We, we went to a bigger bag, and so they wouldn't have to pay as much, cuz they put three or four or five of them small weight bags into one.
Right.
I knew it was gonna get taken advantage of, and that's just what's happening, as far as, so, go back to the twenty pounds. Go back to the twenty, it's gonna be, uh, twenty pounds, or you're gonna pay the double, that's all.
And he is targeting people before the double, but he said, a lot of people are giving a lot of flack, because. They say, well, how can you tell? And he said, well, I've been doing this a long time, I know, but that's not a good answer.
Well, if we wanna get him set a scale, we'll get, we'll give him one of them range scales, and set it on it, or they can go off.
We used, we used to have a, have a scale, they did, they put it on.
It's still there, but I don't think it works very well. It, it, it works well, um, one option that we could look into, which is why I say we could have the, the stopgap by putting a twenty gallon or thirty gallon. We could look, we, 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 we could look into buying bags too, so a lot of times, they, they do that, where you come to the pound office, you purchase a bag, and that's the bag, that's the only guy that will pay.
We, 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 that's, that might not, we're in the country ten. In the city and stuff.
It's done a lot of times in Maine, not just in big towns, but, but, but a lot of small towns.
Instead of the tokens, you have a bag?
Instead of the token, you have a bag. And it would solve our, our token problem too.
Yeah.
But I think the stopgap is that we say no bigger than thirty gallons, and I can get some information for you guys about the bag cost, and if it's even, will it ever worth it? Because that, because then the stopgap would be that we have that thirty, that thirty-gallon bag one.
It's gonna take a while to. For everybody to get used to that.
Yeah.
And I felt, felt concerned regarding. There's ninety bags, that's. That's a hundred and eighty steps plus two, because then the morning goes up, and then the evening will go down, so that's a lot of weight. And a lot.
Many times he carries the bag up the steps.
Definitely.
Right. Well, God. So. You didn't say much about digging a, a big, a deep hole, putting a trash container.
Funny you say that, because that facility is not gonna hold up too many more years, so we have to redesign.
Right.
Um, and having a drive-through would be so much more driving. But that's for future planning, um, but I had a meeting with, uh. With Ernie, Billy, and Dustin on that, um, a couple of weeks ago, and we haven't, it's not gel enough to present it.
Especially in the winter, it gets slippery up there, you know?
And that slope by the sand salt shed could be redesigned to do that. Um, which also, just to let you know, I will have that rent up, um, by Friday.
Nice.
Putting it down.
That's working out. Yeah, that's the, that's the transfer. And office. Um. We are about to send out, and we'll be working on the foreclosure notices tomorrow. So it's a horrible time of year to do it, but this is how the calendar falls. Um, so people will get their forty-five day notice pending automatic foreclosure. Um, our town clerk has given her notice as well. Um, that will be effective on the thirtieth of this month. Um, we are.
On, so she's received notice, you accepted it?
No, that's what you guys are still in charge of, yeah.
Cuz. If, before she leaves, we need to have a replacement.
I'm going to do that.
That's even, we're already talking about you being underwater, dude, now you're saying, yeah, I'll take it, it's like. We need to look at it pragmatically and say, we have a part position that's available, but we need to fill with a qualified person. Um.
We will call, I didn't want to rush him, I want to take, you know, to take her time and to make sure, and I can keep the office going.
So.
So you're kicking her premium pay for building the office?
That, that's not something we bring up right now. What we need to do right now, what we need to do right now, Dawn, and have him, if we're gonna do this, put out an app, put out a. Something for somebody to replace Catherine in the town office, talking about somebody pay or whatever is, that he. Means that he owes it right now.
True, however, um, that's my, that's my anxiety kicking in, that, wait a minute, we're just gonna pile it on to Anne. And Daniel, and that's, that's not acceptable.
Well, if he says, if he can say you can do it right now, then until we, until we get the ready, you know, uh, application out there and get it out. So we can get it on the website, and somebody does, or we can start doing them. I mean, it, and we don't have a whole lot of choice.
We don't want to lose, obviously, the, the clerk, that's not ideal, but it's happening, so we'll deal with it, and. The one, the, like, bright side is, it's. It's a good time of year for it, it's gonna be slower, all the tax bills have gone out, all the tax payments have come in. People aren't buying as many cars as they would during the summer or the spring after they get their tax returns, so this, this will give us. Yeah, a few weeks of downtime. To find somebody, and like I said, Anne, Anne and I are very keen for to keep the office going.
So definitely ready for this one, but ready for next one?
Of this month.
Well, we said that we'd give you some time to find some. So does that mean you're gonna send out, uh, requests now, or post a position?
After the holiday, yes, is when we will start to advertise.
So she'll be gone by then.
So after the holidays, so this week, you're gonna put out a post.
Next week.
This she'll be gone.
Well, don't, don't we, don't we know the qualifications, have we put out this posting for, why don't we just hit the button and send it out, what is the problem? I, I don't understand, but it's in the budget to fund this, but then we need the help. There's always the, there's things always.
First of all, first of all, this is. This is the first time I, we're making announcements, it's getting done tonight, so to make any rash decisions right this minute. To me, that ain't it. I, I think we, we'll wait till like two more weeks come up, we'll have Dan do all this stuff.
Whoa, 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 what kind of rash decisions are these? I don't understand.
About showing a position right now, we have administrative, says we're all factories.
I, and I, I've been to the office. And to make the assumption.
I've been there fourteen years, I know exactly what you're talking.
Somebody is gonna take on additional work. At the same comp she has, the same house she has, it's unacceptable.
Well, I, then you, then you, you need, we all need to have a sit-down special with Daniel.
I, and I agree. No question, to make that, you know, he can, he can speak for himself, he can pile it on, or. It's still our responsibility, make sure the work's getting done, so he's. Been taking on a lot of stuff, and it's gotta get done. So just to be a function of, he didn't complain, doesn't mean that it's. It's getting done to expectations, and for him to assume that Anne's gonna take on additional responsibilities. Without some gravity, I have a problem. Be the bumper outage, bumper come, something.
Well, we can, we can sit down and talk about that, I mean.
If I may. Can you guys hear me?
Hello, Anne?
I think, um, what, what we're getting at is that. Um, if you have someone's resignation, you ought to really post that position. Um, you know, after Thanksgiving at the end of the month, correct? Um, anything as far as, um. My, my own job description or pay ought to be done. Perhaps in an executive session, does that sound like a good idea? Um, but we need to move on. Right now, um, in the situation that we're in, and post that position. Um, so we can get. You know, somebody trained, um, in the proper time, and the rest should be something for, um, an executive session. Not, not for a public meeting.
You're in, I appreciate that, I agree with you.
And I appreciate everybody's comments, um, but. Um, I, I think we ought to move on and do what we can. To, to fill that position. That, that's all, thank you.
Thank you, Anne.
Please submit that posted after Thanksgiving. Roads.
No, all we hope is to done about one, that one's gonna wait until one or two go. It's, hopefully it don't fail between now and springtime, I don't think it will, but otherwise, then all other nine culverts got replaced, digging done. And I'm still working on. Hopefully the roads are far over it this weekend, I can finish reading roads, uh, touching them up before winter. And I should be good. When this ends, it's all within out, all done, put up. We just gotta order some more salt, we'll use that, um. To be available for residents here shortly on weekends, they can start getting some five-gallon bucket. We'll put some out, yeah.
We all know.
Check with Ernie at the transfer station, they'll guide you when you get some on weekends. That's right, Stephen, the five miles an hour, okay, night time. I don't think we pay attention to them, but they're up there.
Far to far.
So we had the first annual Tricker Trump that. Um, was a great success for, for people in the town. We got a lot of feedback, um, very happy with us doing something like that for them. Um. We're planning on December eleventh, doing a picture taking with Santa Claus. Here at the station. From nine to two. Um. Got the annual testing done of all the trucks. Um, had to repair one of the cylinders for the old rig or on the aerial. That took forever to get the parts for, because. Patrick, they're all to come by this time, this year, for some reason. Um, other than that, uh, went for inspections for the trucks. I have to replace tires on engine one. It's got, uh, a plant that is rubbed off on the exhaust. Had some lights out, we've already fixed those. And, uh, on the. And on the aerial, we have to do some exhaust work and we had some lights out on that. So once those are repaired. We'll be able to get the inspection stickers done on them. I checked. Seven, eight places for tires for engine one and. Uh, maybe municipal, uh, not maybe municipal. Um, the commercial tire gave us the best price. They used the, uh, the municipal bid. Um, but the four tires for that truck is still twenty five hundred bucks. How often do we buy them? Engine one, the international.
How often did we buy them?
Well, the, the tires on the truck are twenty two years late. They're not driver rubber, they're just one they have.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, so. I mean.
I think you get your money on.
Yeah, for sure, um. The, uh, the exhaust work, Stu's gonna take care of for me. And he's also fixing the carburetor on engine two, it's leaking gas. Um, he's putting a carburetor in that for us. And, uh. Let's see, we, we have been approached about burning the structure on the Alexander Road. Um, fuel bond, uh, on that sort of property. It's going to be quite a chore to just do that now, um. It's not like we can just have them sign off a waiver anymore and go in and burn the building down, I'm finding out. There's not, however, the E P still has to come down and inspect the site. If there's any potential runoff or anything like that, and the landowner is responsible for putting up. Silk fence or whatever they recommend. Um, they also make recommendations on the basement, so. Say the shingles that were on the roof were the old asbestos site. They would be responsible for having that taken care of. Yes, yeah, so I'm in the process, it's just taking a while, working with the state and everything on getting all the paperwork together. So that we can actually do a training break with that, so. Uh, I've, I've been trying to keep log, uh, updated on it as best as I can, but. Trying to get answers ain't always the quickest, so. Once we do that, we're gonna, um, probably end up closing that road off that day. And we'll be doing some, some wildfire training up there on that.
Is it good for you people to do that? I understand the training plan.
Yeah.
Or is it better just to tell the property owner, no, you need to take it down?
Right, well, I mean, if it gets to the point where it's gonna be. Real expensive for him to take care of the abatement and outrack. It's gonna be better off for him just to have somebody come in and haul it up in a. A big dumpster, basically. There's really, you know, to take the, the asbestos shingle, if there is any off or any of that stuff, it's gonna be. Just as, you know, you might as well just demolish it, take it to a, it needs to go anyway. But yeah, I mean, if it's a, if it's a bench structure that we could actually go into and. There's, there's nothing better than actually having a, a lot of fire training to train the fire by this. Um, the real thing is better than, you know, simulation any day, it's simulation, you can't get the. The feeling of what it's really gonna be like, so. Um, and then, then what I'm in the process right now of. Getting our annual mandatory to the required by Bureau of Standards scheduled for. January or February, whenever, uh, kind of as many as available to do that. And so the last thing is that, uh, Daniel and I have been throwing some ideas back and forth about. Well, as we know, everybody is certain for firefighters everywhere right now, firefighters, B M S, you name it, everybody's ball on it. We've always done a, like a reimbursement or a stipend process here in town. It's, it would almost be better for us if we came up with a pay by the hour type thing. So that whatever the person works, they get paid for and they get downed for. Through, you know, the, the payroll part of the budget. Uh, I think that that might be a way that we might have a, a better incentive on people showing up. Cause right now, if they show up in meetings, they really don't get anything. But we need them there just as much as we need them at a call, because we still have. All the equipment that has to be checked, you know, all the trucks that need to be checked over, and then we do trains. And you know, if you can't get people at the trains. It's, you know, it, it, it doesn't move us, you know, much, so. That's something that we're working on, um.
And I was gonna say, I don't know that we have the money in the budget right now to do it.
No, it, it would be something that would have to be, you know, budgeted for.
Next time.
That, yes, not now.
Right.
No, this is something that we're just, we're trying to figure it out. I've talked to a lot of, a lot of other developments around us and. To get a definitive number on what the budget for is almost impossible, because we don't know how many calls we're gonna have. I mean, we could take an average of what we get over the last five years. And then the average amount of people that we have show up and then come up with a preliminary number, but. You know, we don't know.
Probably gonna have to do, like taking calls, taking bad. A hundred calls, I'm just using a hundred as a figure. You know, and you've had ten firefighters show up, they can sing to one of them for five hours. You had a hundred calls, you know, and you pay them. I'm gonna throw in a twenty buck an hour, you know, I'm just a figure, this is, you know, cause that's. Comes up to a hundred thousand dollars, I'm just saying, it doesn't, I say it comes up to a hundred thousand. Now we're gonna sell the town.
Right.
On, on how we're gonna do this thing.
Exactly.
Yeah, and right now, we only put in one.
Thirteen, thirteen thousand for reimbursement for them.
What about the towns paying there?
So around us, the lowest, the lowest price that I've gotten, which is across the bridge is like thirteen fifty an hour. And then you have Alna that's paying close to twenty bucks an hour. And Alna also gives them supplemental insurance. Lots they're paying into the vote sap program, which is like a retirement for firefighters. And they also will provide them with a life insurance policy. So they're really doing a lot for them over there, and I don't know how that's working for their budgeting, but. That, that's a lot of money. I mean, if we could just have a decent wage for them, you know, I think that'd be good stat here.
Does the town pay for, uh, sure, right?
So it does come out of my budget, yes.
What the last time we budgeted?
Well, it wasn't, they are, this year I put in more for maintenance, because. Everything is going up, the labor rates are going up, the maintenance, um. Uh, yeah, everything, uh, fuels going up, uh, well, would, thank God the town has actually. Separated that out of my budget now, so that makes it a little simpler for, for all of us. Um, yeah, thank you, Dan. And, uh, but as far as pay increase goes for anybody, I mean, why? The chiefs having had a pay increase and I don't know when the last time was. Um, the firefighters have spent at least. Eight, nine years.
The number of fires, the number of people that responded.
I think to the town, to the town reporter.
I, I have all where we run through, yes, it is.
If you have to do that now, because that's how he just, he, uh, separates the money, who would have showed up.
Yes.
And they get paid for all I say that.
Kind of like a points.
Right, he's got that, he's, he, I think he has.
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, I, I mean, that's, we, we just often because I. We all know the, the regionalization thing, uh, it, it's a great concept. But sometimes it can get true, you know what I mean? If there's a fire enrichment and, and same way with regionalized enrichment, or who's gonna take priority at this point? That town's gonna take priority, so guess what address is gonna set right out? They're not gonna have anybody, and until, you know, your mutual aid shows up, which. Isn't, it's a great, you know, to count on right now, so. I just, you know, my goal is to, to do the best we can to this town for. Least amount of money it's gonna cost anybody that has access. And then still hopefully, you know, fill the, a group back up.
But people have to have confidence that if there is a fire or, or an emergency. That when, you know, we send someone to the house, that there's enough people there to disable it, uh, you know, to put the fire.
I, I will, I will say that, you know, knock on wood on us, that we have. Never not had someone respond with all this stuff. From, from this, from this department, yes. Um, you know, it might be a one two Tuesday thing during the day, but. But it's still somebody from here has, has gone, where other towns haven't been so fortunate after all. Um, and I mean, we got a great group of people, you know, it's just time is, is like. You, everybody's time is precious to them. Um, and COVID really didn't help us a lot, because we can, you know, several month break when. When there was COVID and, and nobody met, so people found other things to do during that time and. You know, they found out, hey, I can go do this on a Wednesday night, instead of come do this, and so. Yeah, it, it, uh, it's good, it's time to talk more of fall, so. We appreciate the, the support this town gives us greatly.
We appreciate you, Steve.
Yeah. Well, thanks for coming, I hear it. Wash his mouth to the speedway, it's really like.
Yep, no, no, thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
That's all I have, thank you.
That's the water fountain, we're talking about the water fountain.
Old business personal policy update. So I have incorporated all the changes and all that stuff that we talked about at the workshop, I wanted to see if we wanted to stay running the workshop. For the weekends, so we can review that. And, and are there any dates in mind that come on, I'm just seeing this week's workshop.
You trying to get out of something, Alan?
I was thinking we could do next.
I have a meeting.
We could do next Tuesday or Wednesday, move it, move it, we did, at like ten AM or here, it's, it's on the Tuesday.
Is something gonna be done next week?
No, I'm just, I mean, we haven't had one for, yeah, for this long, so we could wait another. And then we're gonna go to the meeting with Evan on Thursday, probably wanna meet that day. Who, and who wants to meet on Friday, so I guess we're already looking for next week. So the Tuesday of that next week would be. The thirteen?
Oh, no.
Actually, six Tuesdays, twenty nine.
Oh, yeah, I was already past that.
He's already, he already went past. December first is, uh. Oh, take us to the sixth with it, which is a pretty convenient location. Right, so. Is.
Oh, we can do it during, yeah, we can do it earlier, I don't care.
So the ace of like, kinda in?
That's good.
It's man.
Thanks, security system of town office.
We had to go reading again to see if the two I've been responding, still haven't heard anything from them. So we said, we do have the black diamond boat, or it's starting to.
Seventy seven thousand dollars?
No, what? No, seven thousand. We, we ain't putting in anything yet, we haven't decided on it.
We, how about a ring doorbell?
Want a good ding dong?
No, no, one of the best.
And audio.
We wouldn't want to put cameras in the parking lot, and one, what, at least one outside, so something happens, somebody go there.
You can do that with that's the brain system, all these, all for health systems, you could buy a test by video.
He's one, I think provides quotes. As an option. I can, uh, go up and talk to them. And report back.
Yeah, I don't mind knowing, so I go up and ask them.
Yeah, well, that's what it is, if, if they're interested in.
You're gonna sign?
Dave, you're gonna be running the office? Okay, moving on, new business, I P support bids.
I would like to table that for next month. If, if, if you have a group.
General assistance.
So you should be, maybe not forgotten because you knew, but this is something that you do. Every year, the, uh, state requires that we approve the, the maximum amount of income. That people are allowed to have for G A and how much we are allowed to pay out for each. Um, I didn't agree with me, because it's not anything we have to say over really, I mean, if you wanted to, we could change that, but. Don't please. The motion, the motion would be to accept the, the, the state, the, the space injection back to them. For the general.
Is that? Number public or is that number we can't?
Yeah, I can pull it up right now, it's long. Like I said, I.
For the whole thing, the per person or per family or?
So if you were to. A party here, it's based on the, the number of, of, of people in the veteran house.
Okay, alright.
So, and, and, and like where you are, obviously, our county doesn't have the same maximum as, as Portland does.
Right. So there's a standard, they, you go, you have to go by state?
Yeah. Again, we don't have to, like, let's go by the state, because like.
Yeah, right, and we always have, I don't think we've ever departed from that, but.
Do you, you wanna see them or?
I do some, I thought that's what it was, but I need to offer something different.
Yeah.
But that's what we've been doing.
Yes.
Motion that.
Yeah.
That's the state.
Yeah, you can sign it or whatever. I make a motion, we set state can use our annual assessment.
I'll say that. Hold on a second.
Yeah, I.
Next, let's go with minute fifteen.
So I, I, I had this great idea, we have Terry, who does all the minutes for all the boards, except for one. He doesn't take the minutes for the videos live for it, so I've spoken to Sherri about it, and now, now, I, I, I'm bringing it to this, you know, to you guys. If, if we're talking about me personally, doing, doing the minutes for this. If if we're talking about me personally, doing doing the minutes for this for these like four days. A lot of time, you 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 have to watch the video and you have to write down stuff, but also I hate them. For being honest. So. I I I hate doing it because it takes so much time and I'm not, I don't like doing it either, so if we were to ask Sherry, she's okay with it, she's. We now have the videos, we could just, you know, she could just have a copy of the video. Um, then she could watch it, you know, and then do it, have somebody else, also then there is like somebody else that's also going to be writing it. Don't bother me right now. Because whether I like it or not, I'm not biased, but when I'm writing, I may, you know, leave out that. Dawn called Evan a loser or something, I don't know, you know. And just so you know, I calculated, it it could take her an average of of. Two, three hours to write them, we have, we have, we have twenty six meetings a year, so it'd be about five hours.
Current rate, I I don't know the current rate, whether it's, is it a CNN time materials?
She's an hourly employee.
Player suggesting that we just add this, and she gets comment based on current grade.
Welcome, Jerry.
An active participant in the meeting should not be the ones who are being.
So we need a motion for that or what?
Um, I think so. Yeah.
I I make a motion, I am very well would be a secretary at a question meeting.
Or second minute. Call it paper. Very happy, you actually have no idea how much stuff that takes away from me.
Can I just ask a a quick question? Um, with her being the secretary of so many boards and committees, is there a risk that she's going to hit a threshold of hours? Or or um, you're gonna have to offer her compensation, like. Um, sick time or vacation time or helping time?
If it comes to that, we will lock that that up. Yes, we're definitely, I'll make that, we'll make, we should not let that happen next month. If it is, we, she, she will not be able to do another board or something, she will not do her forty hours. She doesn't do forty hours now, at all, so. It's a, it's up to this question to make sure that does not happen.
I I think, but.
The answer is yes, though, if she works a certain number of of hours, eventually we would have to compensate her.
But if if she has her. If she already has the positions and is already working more than the threshold that was ideal for you. How do you scale that back after she's already there?
As far as us, we would definitely handle taking it back over. If we, if we can't afford her, you know, if it doesn't work out, we're break.
I would suggest we have to find an alternative.
Right, but I mean, we would have to put it be be back in our hands to make it right, and we don't know.
I mean, it's a good question, but so yes, there are rules in place that if somebody works a certain number of hours.
Right, what, do you know what that figure is, thirty, thirty two?
In in it's in in the state of Maine, if you average over thirty hours per week. For a year, the you your employer has to offer you whatever benefits they offer all their employees. The main. The main. Pay leave act says that somebody that had irregular set of hours. Has to earn one, one time, one hour of paid time off for every forty hours. Sherry probably works forty hours every couple of months. So.
She's way below.
Yeah. But there are laws that I heard that, so that's a good point.
Thank you, guys.
Well, thank you, Jerry.
We have to buy new pens and pens here?
Hey, I don't want to be the supplementals and these payments and all.
So. Yeah, so this is more of a saying, this is from the commitment area that happened. Actually, the majority remark, there also was, there are something here because um. The former Calistervistas was assessed incorrectly because of the the. Because of the error in trio. And then after we assess them again, the correctly, the owner came to us and and had. Had access to to combine all the lots into one law. So now we have to undo everything that we just did. Because they have that right to ask for it, and we have no, we have no recourse to say no.
I'll check the three lot, right, you can combine them all, what's the three lots?
All 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 the lots that are owned by by Kristen Eber, in Krista's, yeah.
As the uh, Litch and Trio then addressed by.
By Trio, by Trio, no, they have not, they have not called back enough. I was just gonna go through and see if they're gonna see what the other regions were, but I'm pretty sure. Um, this person is being taxed for a shed that we didn't know that they had until we went there. Uh, if I can even go last week. This person had a double wide home that was not taxed in trio, thanks to the error. The person had a shed that wasn't packed due to the error. Person had a deck and a mobile home. Um, this person split very well, so they should have been abated some. This is the abatement for the new owner of what just got split that I was mentioning. The person built the house.
These are all the ones that. Joe is a.
Yeah. These are, these, these are from Joe, right, thank you.
What we supplement on here is one. That should have been taxed and wasn't.
That's what I supplemented, yes.
So, no, I I'm just saying, I'm just gonna show you how much. Taxes that are not booked and not there, it should have been.
Oh, this is just on, they took the iceberg, yeah. This person had a mobile home that they didn't tell us they got rid of. That's a lot of them, we 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 we're finding out a lot, people get rid of stuff and don't tell us. So we tax them for it and then. And then when they enter tax, they won't come.
So how about that, we go.
Up to three years, people tend, people can be abated up to three year.
I can get a lot of sign to do tonight.
Well, I make a motion. Prove them as. Recommended by. Joe and. Daniel.
What's happening now?
Oh, a favor.
Okay, last item. Uh, citizen concerns.
The audit, where are we at with that?
We're still waiting on it.
So. I guess the concern, is there any way that the budget review committee can get the name of that, or they presented the audit that's given to the. To the accountant? CPA, do they have that, that they could start reviewing it and seeing anomalies if there are any?
They have everything, it's all in his office. So I don't think I could give a copy, so I have to go and get it from them.
Okay, just working on it, if you, I mean, what is, what's the plan? I I we two years, two years worth of audits we don't have. And I know it was a little bit of a bonnet contention in few meetings, but. What are, what is the board doing to make sure that?
Something we can do. At least, I mean, all all we can do is ask him, uh, and they told us they they will get to it and soon they can get.
So I mean, you got you, one of the three of you called the auditor and spoken to him, you had or? He's still giving the run.
They they don't have the help.
So, um, how does that expose the town to liability if there were a FOA request for? For records for the town and we don't even have them?
We had something like that happen, I would definitely go get the records and make that happen for the person. Cause they're at the office, that will mean that they're not accessible to us. So if that were to happen, I think that that's a free, it is that we will go and like get them. Before that.
So do you think we'll have the order complete by the end of the year, or is that? Uh, too much to ask?
I don't, I'm, I think by the end of the year, we should have the twenty one audit done.
Is John, you spoke to me, did he give you a timeframe?
No, he didn't.
Can he? Have you, I mean, have you pressured?
I have, and I mentioned this, and I've been brought up in a slight feeling about the. About the possibility of going with a different auditor, he said, good luck today. And I've known the guy for many years, I mean, not a, excuse me, smart ass. But that was just, he said, he said, everyone is in the same, same boat as we are. So he says, so he said, that's what you have to do, that's what you have to do.
So you can confirm that they're not waiting on any information that the town.
No, they are not.
Right, we still have everything for twenty two.
We haven't sent it, we haven't sent it.
They haven't done the twenty one yet, so I'm not gonna give them everything for the next one.
Okay, so let me understand, so they're working on finishing twenty twenty one?
Yes.
We don't know when they'll finish, it could be April of next year, or May, or June, we don't, we don't know. But in the meantime, why don't we go out and start investigating? Where else we could go, and what are the solutions there are, I know, you're, you're busy, everyone's busy, but this is a big problem. And this is something that's gone on, they've always been late, they've always been inconsistent, they've never been proactive. It's, 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 you know.
I know not that they've always been late, I know prior, I know like.
I've been on the budget committee now, this is my fourth, starting my fourth year, they've never been on time, ever. But has it always been there? I I I can't answer, I can't, I've heard that, you know, it's. Two way, right, so if we didn't give it to them, and then we blame them, that's pretty unfair, so.
We always used to get it back, we always used to have the budget. Pretty much all wrapped up by December, when I first came on the board fourteen years ago, so. We used to get things on time, we, you know, might have been a little after that in January, but. Things, it it just, it definitely got worse, it's no longer.
I don't want to talk about the audit. Oh, is there any reason why we couldn't use someone in our community who has the, who had, maybe has a. Has a credential, human audit, and um, employ somebody in our own town?
Well, it 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 is a business, they're currently, you know.
Yeah. And you can, and you have to be approved by the state auditor's office.
But at least if we start the process, we're ahead of the game, rather than, you know, at the end of the year, we still don't have the stuff, and the guy says, well, good luck, I'll give it to you when I can, well. We can't run a business that way, apparently it's a business. Daniel, when did you provide the information to?
I. I I worked, I started. I think I said this a lot, but but I'll 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 read that, when I came to town, we both had had a year of basically not being able. So when I came in, I, we couldn't give them the books and they that they were in, so I spent the first few months. I was done probably in March or April, I then. I then gave them everything. That that we had, and then. Yeah.
They had everything by the end of.
They had everything in there, and then in speaking with women, people were speaking with colleagues. I wanted to work on the water problem where where there was nothing really known about the water department, so I took everything back. From them, and then, and then that that was worked on, and then they were given everything again in July.
I would like to bring up getting the communicator back in print and mailed out, it's my understanding, it's like eight hundred dollars. And we have so many new families and new people in this town that don't even know the communicator exists. That I think it needs to be brought back. Into print. I understand your website, and I appreciate that. But the communicator coming in the mailbox for some people is the only line of communication they have. I really feel like we need to bring it back. And what the hell is eight hundred dollars?
I think it was a lot more than eight hundred last night. And yeah, but it ain't money wise, but anyways, I I think it was quite a bit more than eight hundred when we.
But is there a reason we don't have it back?
Well, yeah, we we took a, we, yeah, we took a survey. People just, they they didn't need it, they, I mean, they get it and they throw it away.
But the survey was like three years ago, and in the last two years, we've had almost double the amount of population.
And I'm saying not, like, I'm saying you only have to mail it out every month. But quarterly would be nice, just to mail a communicator in the mail quarterly would be nice.
Quarterly doesn't keep rock on the town.
Well, that's just a blur for each, like, selecting me every this day. You know, fire department is every day, we could put those things in there. I'm just saying, like, you don't have to have the, you know, monthly calendar, unless one of you have a three month calendar. Which I don't know if is realistic, and I'm not gonna put that proposition. But doing a quarterly print and mailing it out to the Dresden residents, I feel is important, and we are all complaining about not getting the information. About things being done, and we don't hear about it, we don't know about it, we don't know where the needs are. We can't help you as a town people to fill needs in committees and fill needs in different places if we don't know where they are. It's just like that stupid website that you refuse to put on the. Town sign that we pay twenty thousand dollars for, because God forbid you get feedback from the actual town people that give a shit.
Fire, take it easy. I remember right, it was uh, two hundred and seventy dollars a month. For the communicator, times twelve.
So do it quarterly.
So, you know.
I looked it up recently, actually on the every door. It's a mail, that doesn't include the cost of the paper and all that, it's a hundred and sixty eight dollars.
That's pretty cheap.
Well, if we mail it once a month, yeah.
It is one of the other legs of the school, right, we have a website, we have.
No, I totally get that, I just. But.
But we need to do it.
Care.
Do it right.
Right, but they, there's people in town that care. And there's new people in town that care, and I know this because I was on the R and G new committee. Where we brought two people onto the committee that happened to show up because they happened to find out about the meeting. That's people that we want to know about what's going on in Dresden. Monthly might be too expensive, it's too tired, and I won't ask that of you. But quarterly, every three months, I don't think it's a bad thing.
I think it loses. Its importance, if you shift it to four, right, I think it needs to stay monthly, but. The other piece of the, you know, Facebook, the website, and the communicator are essential methods of K R A.
I think she's talking about just sending it to everybody. No, I mean, we still have a monthly communicator, just every quarterly have a. Special communicator that we mail to everybody, that's all.
I don't think we need to do that, we just do it, just send it to everybody, just monthly, like we've been, so it's, it's just. We're gonna table that, or do we wanna? You know, do we need, don't, is come down? You know, do we need, don't, is come down and do it? Or if I need somebody to volunteer.
You gotta open the office after four o'clock.
As we identified, the broadband committee is now communication technology. Unfortunately Judy left, um, this is something that Judy and I have been talking about, the. The uh, three-legged stool. For communications, so. I will make sure, I will inform her tomorrow.
I appreciate that, thank you very much.
And then we'll report back. On some suggestions that may come out. And.
And by the way, Daniel was one that I was kind of coming in very upset about it not being on the agenda, because I asked for it to be put on the agenda. So just so you know. That, that I will take, and bow, thank you very much.
We were, we were talking.
Unholy preserve.
Thank you, we're talking about, for the rest, I have some another. As a citizen and a select person.
Yes, sir.
Um, budget reporting, performance to plan, performance to the budget, how we're doing and all that stuff. I would like to see that work into here as part of the. Whatever we're gonna change or have number seven be, that'd be nice to see on a, at least a quarterly basis, how we're performing the plan. What has changed, et cetera, and I'm still gonna be a stickler on, I'd like to see. Tonnage and all that stuff in the transfer station, so we can post that. On whatever the appropriate media is, so people can see they're getting something for their taxes.
I'd be happy to do that.
I will, well, I have. A tool that I'd like to share with you, it's simply an ad for, add on to uh. Existing Microsoft Office stuff.
So what's here, you wanna put this out, what's here right now, you said, we have the tonnage, every, every meeting we have, we have the tonnage. You, so you wanna, I say, you wanna make sure everybody else can hear?
We, I'd like to. Revise the reporting here so that we have metric. Right, so for the transfer station, we know that we tell this tonnage, this money, and that, that stuff.
Okay.
So it's not with the street bills.
Or. No, I mean, we can put down under them, again, seven hundred, we had. Forty-two tons, forty-two tons of garbage this month, on the last two weeks.
Sure, yeah, okay.
People get a sense of what, what is going on, where their money being spent.
But that's only one piece, if you want to see. Performing the force, where you see activity, let's, uh, compare the budget.
Try, correct, my whole thing is budget is, or we care about the budget, and then, you know, we're only looking at this as an annual event.
That's right.
And we need to measure ourselves along the way, and be in the. Now members of the budget review.
Yeah, that's missing.
It's already, it's already created, I, because they asked for it, you've never asked for it. Well, I think, I can send it to you, it's gonna be back tomorrow, yeah.
That would be an approval, because I haven't seen, you never asked for it, actually, we go back to the, but wait.
But that's going on, the committee.
I said, it's, it's, when it appears, moment. It's so, I don't know who else is in line, but I'd like not to lose out.
All right.
I just wait you right now, go ahead, and so, uh. First, I'm listening to. A dialogue about what data select board members have seen, what data they haven't seen. I just watched the select board vote on something that they don't know they voted on, because none of you saw the numbers. And how the state's numbers relate to the town or not, or something, um. Is there a way we can, with townspeople? Can have things like agendas. Uh, in advance of meetings, of course, there's a way, may we please? Would you please establish a policy? That will establish agendas in advance, detailed agendas, not perform agenda, it's not. The things are actually going to be going on, the, the substance. Uh, also, how would a towns person get to see the documents behind? The vote, so we don't see the warrants, which certainly, except that they're all, uh, so is the folder of invoices. It sounds like you aren't even reviewing the folders of invoice, right, you're just seeing the. The print of, of what's there, do I understand that correctly?
You mean as far as your maintenance and stuff?
Talking about this. Warrants.
We, we got, we got our bill, we got, we got. You know, it had, like, under my department, if, you know, as far as some of the other ones, but if, if I have a question on. Anything that comes in. I question it, I, I, I know what the bill is before it comes in, so I'll, I'll ask them to see the bill, when it comes in from Crook or from Fall, or Band, or. I, I know all that stuff, I ask.
Many, many of them are elaborated on, but one I talked about before was, um, the one for the water district, right? It just gives me invoice number and doesn't describe what it is. Most of the others, most of the others have a description, so I know exactly, this is ten hours and fifteen bucks an hour.
Correct.
To an individual, this is, you know, X number, um, seventeen hundred eighty yards. Of winter sand, so we have the breakdown, and we. You know, we review this, um, this is the AP one, right?
Yeah, you're reviewing the payment report, right, and I understand, um, my question is, having just realized that you may not be doing the invoices, will the select board create a policy? To let people of the town? See what their risk, uh, maybe if you're following, right, but, uh, is there, you know, will the select work sees? Uh, create a policy, establish a policy? That allows people to town access substantive agenda. And the substantive documents behind the votes, including invoices that go behind the warrants, because. Uh, for that, I think there, there's hurt, something else, for most of the, I think, with the black policies, right? I think the best way to avoid that is the turn on lights. Uh, so that's, that's my ask, I'm not asking you to vote on that now, it's not an order for a vote now, I'm asking you to consider it.
I came in this way, I came in this way, which is, I wanna see the reports that summarize this stuff. Do you wanna see some of the stuff that goes in, I wanna see it goes out.
I want that, I want that, absolutely, um.
Well, if you have staff, if I bring it to every meeting, I'm gonna say no, that is my opinion. If you wanna go to the town office, and they've got time, if you wanna look over somebody's bill. Or something like that, that's a deal, or the tires, I should bring enough going over every single. Thing at a meeting, I don't wanna be here four, five hours.
Good to meet, I'm asking for the select board. Will establish my policy, not tonight, think about it, have a motion and a vote, establish my policy. A protocol that will include a number of issued items of transparency. Those items include just what you suggested. That as a matter of direction of the select board, if a towns person walks into the town hall and says, I'd like to see this box invoices, please. They can do that. The, all my preference, the subject of vote, that is long and expensive. Uh, I'm not a state agent, so go vote, all that, I don't wanna push you through that, I just wanna see poll. Uh, the, uh, and I also want to see in advance of the meetings. With enough time to talk to my select board members. The documents behind all the things that are gonna be subject to a vote to the select board. So in my agency, we're required to put a packet with a notice in advance of our commission meetings. And people can see the back. And I'm not saying you have to do the same thing, you don't have the same substantive policy issues that we do in the state. I put out hundreds of pages, people really wanna read it, and people do, uh, and then, and then they provide that, that guide back. Uh, I think.
So let me, let me. Throw a little thing out, we do all our bills.
Yeah.
And we not open on Monday, so we have to have everything in by Tuesday morning.
Right.
All right. He, he's making up for a meeting on two, everything, so we can do it on Tuesday, so we can have a meeting on Tuesday. You're not gonna be able to see them build before we have that meeting.
I'm sure you could, because, because there is. Thirty day payable on every bill that goes out these days, put them on the next meeting. The, the.
I guess I don't understand you, I brought in a bill at, at nine o'clock this morning, you have to pay it tonight.
Why did it have to be paid tonight?
Right.
Because it goes on this, this, this agenda, it goes, you, when you, people do work, you have a two week agenda. And if somebody does work, they expect to get paid next following agenda, when we do.
But most companies have a net thirty in the state of May.
Right, that was.
I'm underaging when you receive.
That thirty in the state of May, it is the policy.
We don't have a policy, this is the way we do it right now. Yeah, go ahead.
I think you have a great point, so I think our policy, I think the way that we've been doing it kind of goes with what you're saying, so the way that works right now. Every, so it's not this folder, but, but there's a folder that's in the office. Where we, where we put all the bills that come in, so, so at any point, if somebody were to come in and say, can I see what those are, if I get any more? We can say, yeah, sure, here's the folder. Perfect, and you would do that. One hundred percent, perfect, that's, that was it, that was all I asked, the, the, uh. And as far as the other part about, I, I agree, I wish I could get my, I mean, I wish I could get. I wish that we would talk about a policy, because, yeah, if we had a good deadline, say. Say that, you know, if it's gonna be on the agenda for the select board meeting, it's gonna be anybody on the Tuesday of the week before. Then I know, okay, that's a deadline, and then I could have all these documents, and then I, I, I give them in a packet, so I think you're on to a great. And, and, and your policy can have a word to see, well, right, sometimes they pack, right, but, but that way. Because I think that there is a disconnect between the townspeople and the select board. And I think it comes as much from. There not being sort of current expectations of communication, Matt. Maybe even communicating what they are, right, uh, rather than they're actually being a problem, right, and so I think that for, for these things to be, to be more open would be really helpful. For citizens in the town to feel like. The select board, the town office, we're more, you know, we're more engaged, so, leave me the next question. Which is, so at some point, way back wherever you guys jack the property assessments, twenty-five percent, right?
Watch him off, I'm sorry.
Jack, uh, right, not assess jack, uh, so. Was it enough? Is there another, is coming? And when are we gonna talk about that?
We're gonna talk about twenty-five percent one.
Was the twenty-five percent enough to get us into compliance with? The, you know, principle of the state's valuation matching the state's valuation article?
Yes.
So there's no new increase coming?
We don't know what the numbers are yet for next year, so.
But no new increase is coming based on, based on data that's available today?
Based on data that's available, I don't know. But again, it's still.
Well, it's not an exterior, right? I understand, so to the extent that the, that the. Mill rate didn't decrease by an amount commensurate to the increase in the valuation? What happens with those, to what extent is that gonna result in? Over collection, you know, beyond the budget, and what's gonna happen with that money?
It, it wasn't, it wasn't over collection, it was that the county and the school budget went up by so much, so. That over collection that you're talking about actually wasn't, it was, it was more approb, approb, appropriation to the school and to the town.
So our, our budget was, was, was understated, and we had a shortfall, is what you're saying. And without the twenty-five percent surcharge assessment. We would be looking at, uh, being insolvent, we wouldn't be able to meet that obligation unless we took it out of surplus or. Some other, cut another operating.
No, no, because the increase in the assessment didn't result in.
Right.
Right, the increasing asset value of property equals that number times the mill rate, or right, tax, okay, so it's. Respectively, you're missing a step in that, but the, but the mill rate didn't go down by the same amount that the assessment, total assessment for the town went up. That entire. Window of difference is accounted for by outside tax, county tax?
One hundred percent, because the town budget went down by point one, one oh, one oh six percent.
Okay. Yeah, that's all, thank you. Cool.
I have a spreadsheet that I made, I can show you.
That's, that's just the sort of stuff that you guys put that out there, that we wouldn't be wandering around like.
We did have, we did have, we, we did do it at the meeting.
Publish it, put it somewhere, the beautiful website.
Uh, so, good evening, thank you for taking time for me to talk. Um, and, uh, just wanted to talk about. The, uh, school committee that we met initially on November the third, um, we were missing, I think, one member. Uh, of the committee, uh, for soon to be hopefully committed, uh, with your approval. Uh, and I did bring what we went over at that first meeting, so that you can take a look at it as far as what. The expectation is, uh, going forward and looking at different avenues of. Um, schools, um. So it's. Not necessarily to, uh, I think there's a lot of misunderstanding and miscommunication in the last. Uh, board for the school, so we wanna change the name entirely to just school committee, so that we can, um. We can review the different avenues. And set a date for the public to be able to. Uh, have a, a showcase of, uh, each avenue, so that we can educate the public on. Whether or not it would make sense for Dresden to look at other avenues of school, um. School options, uh, or if we should stay with the RSU, uh, but that, that's the purpose of the committee, so I actually have that. Right up for you, so you can take a look at the different things that we're looking. At doing on the committee, and. Uh, my hope is that tonight we can be charged as a committee, uh, to start. Um, our first initial. Formal meeting on December fifth, I believe, is what we, yeah. Hopefully we'll do that, so.
I missed that this was gonna follow the charter.
Yeah, I, I didn't, we didn't meet to talk about it, to.
Yeah.
To write the official charge. So the whole official charge, but you can charge me in writing a charge.
Okay. That worked.
The concept with the chart is also there's, um, there are ex officio participants to. Help the committee be successful, um, that would include a member of the select board and administrator or clerk.
Yeah.
But. There was a. Document was put together that, um. I, I thought it was gonna be received, but, um. That's kind of the first step.
Okay, so we, we need to go to the town, I need to meet with you.
Yeah, yeah, we're talking about that, it's fine, we're.
Yeah, it's been a crazy month, so.
And, yeah, the, the, as you know, the title is. Controversial, um.
Which is why we're changing it to just school committee.
Right, education.
You do that? When you had a school committee, they could turn.
Well, I would avoid the, the word school and just call it educated, right, so.
Yeah.
It's not, don't make it down, it's just making it broad, because we're gonna talk about, when it comes to education. I can see some of the broadband topics directly related.
Sure.
So, sorry. So. You'll share that with Leah and. Well, thank you, right, Daniel? To Justin's point, we're trying to establish policy and practice, going to. What we doing? I think, I think it's great, I think, something that we've talked about previously that definitely needed, um, so that all education. Concerns are basically being addressed by a committee with active interest. And hope.
Okay. Perfect. That's really all I had.
Are we allowed to still meet while the charter is being done, like, can we still get the?
Right, and it's actually a good thing, because then you don't have to have minutes and all that stuff.
Oh, yeah, so we can still have the December fifth meeting, that, okay.
Thank you for clarifying.
Just not, we could be a shadow.
Gracious, it would be better.
Yeah, it was my fault, I didn't get to you during the month.
I'll share.
You know, I know, thank.
So timing wise, well, when you say it's on the fifth, does we meet on the sixth? Because we could review the charter or charge and approve it on the sixth day. Would be great, let's. Any other citizen concerned?
I'm making a motion, we're here.